Let's go ahead and call this meeting into order and we'll start with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless everybody here at this meeting today. We pray for the agenda set before us. May we grasp those things that you want us to understand. May our decisions benefit those who live and work in our beloved city of Mission. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We have an introduction of Boys and Girls Club Director. Chief?
Yes, sir. We do have Mr. Juan Arévalo here with us, present today. Mr. Arévalo has been with us already for approximately two weeks. Juan is no stranger to the city of Mission, though. I met Juan when I was the coordinator for Mission Crime Stoppers. We did a lot of work, a lot of good work together for the community of Mission. Juan was working for the Mission Housing Authority at the time, being the outreach coordinator, and so he did a lot of good for us, not only in the housing authority, but throughout our community. Mr. Arévalo has been selected as the new director for the Boys and Girls Club. And to tell you a little bit about Mr. Arévalo, he has an education degree from Christian University and also here at UTPA. He's worked for the City of Mission Housing Authority Youth Program from 2001 to 2004. He's also worked for the AmeriCorp Youth Harvest from 2004 to 2008. And he also has worked for the City of Mission as the athletic director back between 2008 and 2011. The last place he was at, and that's where we brought him back home from, was the city of Palmview as a director of Parks and Recreation and Youth Center for six and a half years from 2011 and 2017. So, I'd like to give Mr. Juan Arévalo a big welcome to the city of Mission.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity, first of all. I am beyond grateful for the opportunity I was given to work with the Boys and Girls Club. At the same time, we help our community here in the city of Mission. I'm excited, you know, I'm passionate for the youth in our community. I know there's a lot of great things in our city. I want to thank you for the support Mr. Martínez has given me and for pretty much giving me the opportunity to work with our local kids here in the city. So, once again, thank you, and I'm beyond grateful for the opportunity, so.
Thank you, Mr. Arévalo. Welcome.
You know, I've never met the young man, but I hear a lot of good things about him. And this is the first time I meet him. But there's a lot of people in Mission that really like him, and I had a lot of calls concerning the way he took care of kids when he was working for us. He left to Palmview and then we got him back. Todo se vale. So, I really want to thank Martín for choosing him, but, you know, he really has a lot of good friends here in Mission. Now, we go on to the next item, and Martín?
Yes, we do have Mr. Arévalo, who is going to present the recipients for the scholarships for the Boys and Girls Club. I know we have more scholarships than the kids that are here today, but I know that some of them weren't able to make it, so Juan, if you can help us with the presentation, please.
We have a couple of them that are here. I'm going to ask Andrew Silva to come forward. I don't know, we have a couple of other ones. Any of the other scholarship recipients here? If you want to, you want to come this way? I've been here very few weeks, I don't know familiar with them. I don't know, we have our advisory committee here? Okay. So, these are our recipients for the 2017 school year. We have a couple of them from Mission, Mission Veterans, and we also have the Sherland ISD. So, here are all our recipients, so I would like for us to give them a big hand and how they have worked. So, I'm going to...
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we have them introduce themselves and maybe say where they're, what school they're from? Each one of them? That would be nice.
Yes, hello. My name is Andrew Silva, and I'm a graduate from Mission Veterans Memorial High School.
Congratulations.
I'm Hannah Santiago, and I just graduated from Sherland High School.
My name is Omar Luna, and I just graduated from Sherland High School.
Hi, I'm Cleo Gorza, and I just graduated from Sherland High School.
I'm Anne Rawa. I graduated from Sherland Pioneer High School.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Aldegrigas, and I'm a graduate from Mission Collegiate High School.
I am Ainge Arvarez, and I graduated from Mission High School.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Ramon, and I graduated from Mission High School.
If it's okay, Mr. Arévalo, we're going to have a picture with the whole group back here. Thank you.
Very good, very good, guys.
Congratulations. 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 Sir, congratulations. Congratulations. Very good, very good, guys. Congratulations. All right, everybody look over here. And then, three, two, one. Wait, nobody move. One second. And one more. And three, two, one.
Very good.
You got it.
Thank you, guys. We go on to our next item, and it's a presentation by Mr. Garza on a presentation to Grupo Duelo.
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. First of all, we're very happy to have a famous and excellent group living in the city of Mission, and that's Grupo Duelo that are here with us, present here with us today. But, you know, Grupo Duelo is a group that we found out is very giving, very caring for our community. We had no idea that, first of all, they lived in the city of Mission, so we're very proud of that now. But at the same time, back in April, the Ibanez family came to the city of Mission. They wanted to do something for their community, the community where they reside, where they live, sleep, eat, wanted to make sure that they got involved with the city of Mission, wanted to make sure that they gave back to the community that they're so happy about. And so, they wanted to come up with an idea, what can we do for the city of Mission? And so, this happened back in, close to the time of Dia del Niño. And so, they felt that it was something that was going to be appropriate for them to get involved with. They're very, we've learned that the Ibanez family is a great family-oriented family. They're very well structured as far as, you know, family, kids, very supportive of groups like we had here earlier today, the Boys and Girls Club. And so, we're very pleased to have partnered up with them with an event that happened in April for Dia del Niño. We did it at La Placita Park. They filled the park, and this is something that they did on their own, nothing that the city participated. The city only participated in the resource as far as personnel, getting them what they needed, so they can be out there performing for the kids. And they were able to serve hundreds of kids by giving them toys for Dia del Niño. And we just had a great event. A lot of you all were there, and you saw how packed it was. And it was our first annual, and I'm calling it a first annual because I'm putting Mr. Ibanez on the spot here, right? We want to make sure that they come back and continue participating, but we're very, very blessed to have the Ibanez family here in the city of Mission. We're very grateful for them, and we wanted to give them a little token of appreciation on behalf of the city of Mission, Mayor Salinas, and you all as council members. So, if I may, if I can have Mr. Ibanez in his group. You can go ahead and present your group members, but we want to congratulate you, sir, and thank you for the services. We appreciate it.
Bueno, pues yo quiero agradecerles. No ganaba la oportunidad, como lo comentaba, este, Mr. Garza, que estuvimos aquí, mi esposa y yo. Faltaba creo que una semana y media para el evento, ¿verdad? Y este pasado 26 de abril fue un día mágico, ¿verdad? Porque bueno, bonito, estuvo muy bonito el evento, fue algo que no esperábamos, ¿verdad? Como lo comentas, nació como una idea, y bueno, yo creo que hay muchísima gente a la que tengo que agradecer. No me alcanza el tiempo, como voy a echar todo el ajunto, y empezó a agradecerle a todos, en especial a mi esposa, ¿verdad? Muchas gracias porque es la que está detrás de todo este movimiento que hemos estado haciendo afuera de la música, estar ayudando. Fue un evento súper especial, mucha gente quedó muy contenta. Tuvimos respuesta de medios internacionales en México y en Estados Unidos, y donde quiera que hemos ido, este evento que hicimos para el Dia del Niño ha resonado y ha llevado. Así que, el nombre de la ciudad de Mission muy en alto, nos sentimos orgullosos y bien agradecidos porque primero que nada, yo creo que mucha gente debe venir con ustedes a proponerles cosas, a proponerles ideas, y que nos han dado la atención, que nos han dado el tiempo, de veras que significa mucho para nosotros. Sabemos que también está por medio su nombre, y como decimos, acá entre las razas se pueden quemar si no jale el evento, pero les agradecemos de corazón que se hayan dado la oportunidad. Y qué bonito que podemos ayudar a la comunidad de Mission. Decidimos hacer este evento porque nos sentimos agradecidos. Sabemos que la comunidad, la juventud, es el futuro de nuestro mundo, y hay que protegerlo y darle la mejor infancia posible. Y yo creo que se logró ese día, si un solo día podemos grabar en su memoria que se divirtieron, que la pasaron bonito, que estuvieron jugando, corriendo, cantando, le tratamos de hacerlo a lo mejor. Nos sentimos agradecidos y con el corazón lleno de alegría. Gracias a Dios que se llevó a cabo este evento, y como dice Martín, si nos permiten, esperamos que el próximo año se repita y se haga más grande, y que siga creciendo, y que se haga una tradición de aquí de la ciudad de Mission. Muchas gracias a todos, de parte de un servidor, Oscar Ivan Trevino, de todo el Grupo Duelo, de mi familia, estamos a sus órdenes. Muchas gracias a todos.
Muchas gracias.
Look right here. And then, three, two, one, smile. Let me do one more. All right, and three, two, one. Perfect. You got it.
We now have a chamber of members report. Is anybody here in the chamber? Oh, yes, here we are.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Melly Patterson. I'll be presenting for Mr. Rozell. We have two scheduled ribbon cuttings this Thursday with U.S. Reno Care at 4:00. That's located at 200 West Mile 2. It's right behind the Peter Piper. Invitations have been sent, and we welcome and appreciate your participation. We also have another ribbon cutting on that same day for Farmers Insurance, Ms. Christine Chico, and that will be at 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. Location is 1512 East Griffin Parkway, Suite 9 here in Mission. We're also in preparation for our second annual barbecue throwdown. That will be scheduled for July 22. We are currently selling tickets. We've also provided information via emails, and we appreciate your participation in the same. We catered to about 300 participants last year, people from the communities that come out to support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We already got the call for Thursday.
Okay, perfect. We'll see you then.
Thank you, Melly.
Next item is the department report. You have it in your packet. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask, so we can discuss it.
If there's no questions, I'd like to put into formal motion to accept the department reports as reported in writing.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to go ahead and approve the department reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item eight is the citizen's participation. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to address the council? Not having anything to do with our agenda? Julio? Your only agenda, no?
Yeah, but this is something else. I just wanted to congratulate you, Mayor, and the city council, and the city manager for continuing the efforts on giving those scholarships out. I know that we had four students from Sherland, and that is awesome. That is great to see the kids. I know two girls showed up late, but they weren't able to take the picture, but that is awesome.
They just came in, right?
Yeah, they came in and...
Y'all want to take a picture now? We can do that, Mayor.
Come on in. For the girls, yes.
Yes.
The new girls that came in late.
I believe the president of the Boys and Girls Advisory Board is here.
Okay. Mr. Ocaña?
Yeah.
Can you get Mr. Ocaña, please?
So, anyway, I wanted to make sure that it was announced to the public that this is a great effort that is done throughout the year by the Boys and Girls Club, and, you know, to try to get these monies for these kids, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ocaña. We're going to take a picture with some of the recipients. Mr. Ocaña, if you want to come back over here with us, please.
Can we have the two little, two recipients that didn't...
Where are the girls? They came in late.
Yeah, to come and give us their name and school.
Yes, that's right. Ma'am, you want to state your name and which high school you graduated from?
I'm Teresa Baldato. I'm from Sherland High School.
There's another one? They came in late?
It's great.
Where's the other girl?
Are we going to bring all of them?
Yeah, let's bring everybody back here, please.
All of them and...
All of them are here.
Thank you.
Let's bring all of them.
How about the other young lady there? We're missing Juan. I think we're missing one young lady. Then, take a picture. Is that it? Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Who else is missing?
Mr. Seda, if you want to represent the board from Sherland, please?
All right, everybody look over here at me. And then, three, two, one. And we move. One second. And three, two, one, smile. Okay, nobody move.
Congratulations again. We have one more, one more incidence participation.
Anybody else with assistance participation?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Brad Benson. Former Assistant Scout Master for Troop 84, and now current committee member for Troop 84. Anyway, while school goes out, a lot of things still go on, whether you're participating in staff, in TAP program, or the Boys and Girls Club program, or the Girls and Girls Program, but Boy Scouts still lives on. I have members from Troop 84 with us today. I have Armando and Juan Rosetta. Do you want to stand up? Christian and Jonathan Mendez. And also my son, Christian Benson. Not a shy bow in their bodies. Anyway, they're here this afternoon because they're participating in one of the merit badges, it's citizenship in the community, and they are required to attend a city committee meeting, and also they can go to a school board meeting. But anyway, they're here to visit, so y'all need to be on your best behavior. But anyway, they might stick around later on, ask y'all questions about what you're doing, how you feel about your position here. But anyway, just a little bit about them. They've got a camp out this weekend, north of Edinburgh. When they come back, they're going to help us do Monarch Butterfly Garden over at Banworth Park in front of the new sign we just erected. And then, following Sunday, they go up to Bear Creek Boy Scout Camp, which is up in Hunt, Texas. Some of the kids haven't been away from mom and dad yet, and some of them are seasoned. They've been out for a while. But anyway, they'll be leaving next Sunday and be out there for a week, working on the merit badges. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Brad. You want to take a picture with your girl? Let's do that.
Might as well get him over here.
Everybody look over here. And then, three, two, one. Smile. Let me do one more. And three, two, one. Perfect. You got it.
We now have a chamber of members report. Does anybody here in the chamber? Oh, yes, here we are.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Melly Patterson. I'll be presenting for Mr. Rozell. We have two scheduled ribbon cuttings this Thursday with U.S. Reno Care at 4:00. That's located at 200 West Mile 2. It's right behind the Peter Piper. Invitations have been sent, and we welcome and appreciate your participation. We also have another ribbon cutting on that same day for Farmers Insurance, Ms. Christine Chico, and that will be at 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. Location is 1512 East Griffin Parkway, Suite 9 here in Mission. We're also in preparation for our second annual barbecue throwdown. That will be scheduled for July 22. We are currently selling tickets. We've also provided information via emails, and we appreciate your participation in the same. We catered to about 300 participants last year, people from the communities that come out to support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We already got the call for Thursday.
Okay, perfect. We'll see you then.
Thank you, Melly.
Next item is the department report. You have it in your packet. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask, so we can discuss it.
If there's no questions, I'd like to put into formal motion to accept the department reports as reported in writing.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to go ahead and approve the department reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item eight is the citizen's participation. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to address the council? Not having anything to do with our agenda? Julio? Your only agenda, no?
Yeah, but this is something else. I just wanted to congratulate you, Mayor, and the city council, and the city manager for continuing the efforts on giving those scholarships out. I know that we had four students from Sherland, and that is awesome. That is great to see the kids. I know two girls showed up late, but they weren't able to take the picture, but that is awesome.
They just came in, right?
Yeah, they came in and...
Y'all want to take a picture now? We can do that, Mayor.
Come on in. For the girls, yes.
Yes.
The new girls that came in late.
I believe the president of the Boys and Girls Advisory Board is here.
Okay. Mr. Ocaña?
Yeah.
Can you get Mr. Ocaña, please?
So, anyway, I wanted to make sure that it was announced to the public that this is a great effort that is done throughout the year by the Boys and Girls Club, and, you know, to try to get these monies for these kids, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Seda. We're going to take a picture with some of the recipients. Mr. Ocaña, if you want to come back over here with us, please. Thank you.
Can we have the two little, two recipients that didn't...
Where are the girls? They came in late.
Yeah, to come and give us their name and school.
Yes, that's right. Ma'am, you want to state your name and which high school you graduated from?
I'm Teresa Baldato. I'm from Sherland High School.
There's another one? They came in late?
It's great.
Where's the other girl?
Are we going to bring all of them?
Yeah, let's bring everybody back here, please.
All of them and...
All of them are here.
Thank you.
Let's bring all of them.
How about the other young lady there? We're missing Juan. I think we're missing one young lady. Then, take a picture. Is that it? Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Redo, redo.
Who else is missing?
Mr. Seda, if you want to represent the board from Sherland, please?
And any other board members? We've got three years to go in my election, but that's good.
All right, everybody look over here at me. And then, three, two, one. And we move. One second. And three, two, one, smile. Okay, nobody move. Congratulations again. We have one more, one more incidence participation.
Anybody else with assistance participation?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Brad Benson. Former Assistant Scout Master for Troop 84, and now current committee member for Troop 84. Anyway, while school goes out, a lot of things still go on, whether you're participating in staff, in TAP program, or the Boys and Girls Club program, or the Girls and Girls Program, but Boy Scouts still lives on. I have members from Troop 84 with us today. I have Armando and Juan Rosetta. Do you want to stand up? Christian and Jonathan Mendez. And also my son, Christian Benson. Not a shy bow in their bodies. Anyway, they're here this afternoon because they're participating in one of the merit badges, it's citizenship in the community, and they are required to attend a city committee meeting, and also they can go to a school board meeting. But anyway, they're here to visit, so y'all need to be on your best behavior. But anyway, they might stick around later on, ask y'all questions about what you're doing, how you feel about your position here. But anyway, just a little bit about them. They've got a camp out this weekend, north of Edinburgh. When they come back, they're going to help us do Monarch Butterfly Garden over at Banworth Park in front of the new sign we just erected. And then, following Sunday, they go up to Bear Creek Boy Scout Camp, which is up in Hunt, Texas. Some of the kids haven't been away from mom and dad yet, and some of them are seasoned. They've been out for a while. But anyway, they'll be leaving next Sunday and be out there for a week, working on the merit badges. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Brad. You want to take a picture with your girl? Let's do that.
Might as well get him over here.
Everybody look over here. And then, three, two, one, smile. Let me do one more. And three, two, one, smile. That's perfect.
Do it. Thank you very much. Anybody else would like to address the council on our citizen's participation? If not, we'll go into our public hearings, and we'll ask Mr. Acevedo for our first item, 1.1A.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to allow multi-lane drive-through ordering station at Chick-fil-A Restaurant at 2501 East Expressway 83, being Lot 8, Block A, Sherry Taylor Expressway Commercial Subdivision. The property is owned Light Industrial C4. If the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May 24, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located 1,500 feet east of Sherry Road along the north side of the expressway, and, Mayor and Council, what Chick-fil-A is doing is they're removing eight of the parking spaces along the east side of the building, and they're installing another ordering station along the east side of the building. If you've noticed, Chick-fil-A during peak hours, sometimes cars get stacked all the way up to the frontage road, and by creating this ordering station, they're going to alleviate that problem, and it would create stacking for an additional five or six cars. Plus, in talking to Chick-fil-A, they've told staff that by installing the second ordering lane, it also speeds up the efficiency of the restaurant by an additional 20%. Chick-fil-A will also be doing some renovations to also speed up the process, so they will be closed for a few days. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve the conditional use permit.
So, move, Mayor.
And approve ordinance 4522.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next item, item B.
Item 1.1B, Mayor, is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window for La Curva Taqueria. The address is 2575 East Griffin Parkway, Suite 12. This is in Lot 1, Tres Picos, Phase 1 subdivision. The property is owned C3, and the applicant is El Eser Uristi of La Curva Taqueria LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May 24, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located 1,700 feet east of Bryan Road along the north side of Expressway 83. This is a picture or a rendering showing the building. What they have here is a 16 by 30 portable building, and it is 138 feet from the front of the property line. So, the applicant, Picru Group, sells tractor trailers, so even though the building is 138 feet deep, you really can't see it from the expressway. It's kind of buffered by all the commercial trucks that are for sale at this site. The hours of operation are Monday from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is a brand-new conditional use permit, so we are requesting that this item be approved for one year. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for one year. We concur with P&amp;Z's recommendation. The property is owned C3, and the applicant is El Eser Uristi of La Curva Taqueria LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May 24, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located approximately 700 feet west of Taylor Road along the north side of Griffin Parkway or 495. La Curva Taqueria has been at this location for one year now and is seeking for their CUP to be approved once again. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for an additional three years of this drive-through service window. We concur with P&amp;Z's recommendation. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve the conditional use permit, drive-through service window, and also approve ordinance 4523.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item C.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to keep a portable building for sales office use by Toksa LLC. The address is 1517 East Expressway 83 being Lot 3, Henry Science Subdivision. The property is owned Light Industrial and the applicant is Pecu Group. If the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May 24, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located 1,700 feet east of Bryan Road along the north side of Expressway 83. This is a picture or a rendering showing the building. What they have here is a 16-by-30 portable building, and it is 138 feet from the front of the property line. So, the applicant, Pecu Group, sells tractor-trailer, so even though the building is 138 feet deep, you really can't see it from the expressway. It's kind of buffered by all the commercial trucks that are for sale at this site. The hours of operation are Monday from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is a brand-new conditional use permit, so we are requesting that this item be approved for one year. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for one year. We concur with P&amp;Z's recommendation. Item 1.1C is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not...
Mayor, how long has that building been there?
The last CUP was granted in 2014. However, since this is a new owner, it requires to have another CUP. The previous owner installed the landscaping that you see there in the pictures. They installed some palm trees and shrubs. But this is a new owner. The building has been there. The last CUP was in 2014.
But it's been there...
It's been there probably longer than that, correct?
Maybe a little bit more. But it's been there for a long time now.
You're wanting to do a one-year instead of a three-year? I mean, it's been there for a long time.
Because it's a new operator, we're doing it one-year.
Okay. Well, I move for approval. Mayor has presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and present to approve the conditional use permit and also approve the ordinance 4524. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. Item D.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1D is public hearing for the proposed one-year action plan fiscal year 1718. The purpose of this public hearing, Mayor and Council, is to solicit comments on estimated funding for CDBG allocation of 904 to 40 for fiscal year 1718, as recommended by the Citizens Advisory Committee. The notice was published on May 26, 2017, and the comments will go through June 26, 2017. The proposed funding is as follows. Silver Ribbon 2,000, Salvation Army 2,000, Heroes Haven 2,000, Amigos El Valle 26,000, Area Agency on Aging 5,000, Easter Seals 4,000, Children's Advocacy 7,000, Casa of Hidal County 2,000, for a total of $50,000 for public services. Housing Assistance Program Rehabilitation 25,000 and Reconstruction 612,000. Housing Administration is 80,000. Program Administration is 137,000 to 40 for grand total of 904,000 to 40, which is the total estimated funding for 1718. There is no action required. It is a public hearing only. Open it up for comments.
This is a public hearing. Will you have any comments from the public? Or from the council? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and go on to our next item. This position of minutes, we have the City Council minutes that we had, a meeting that we had on May 22, 2017. We need a motion to approve those minutes.
So move, Mayor. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We also have to acknowledge the receipt of the minutes that we have for our local board members. The Traffic Safety Committee, special meeting on March 8 of 2017. Mission Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, we had a meeting on April 25 of 2017. The Mission Redevelopment Authority, we had a meeting on April 25 of 2017. And the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 10 of 2017. We do need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of these minutes.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to acknowledge the receipt of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We also go down to 4.1, Mr. Asavero. Preliminary, preliminary platter approval.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.1 is a preliminary plat approval for Camino de Abram subdivision, a 62.2-acre tract of land situated in Nicolas Amora Survey A-76, Portion 48. This is in our rural ETJ, and the developers Everman Development, Inc., and the engineer South Texas Infrastructure Group. Mayor and Council, this is an 81-lot, single-family subdivision that's located about half a mile north of 3-Mile Line between Abram and Brushline Road. Because of the size of the lots, all of them being at least half an acre or more, septic tanks will be used in this subdivision. City staff has reviewed and approved the water, sewer, streets, and drainage being proposed for this subdivision. Item 4.1 is now before you.
We do need a motion to go ahead and...
Mayor, I have a question. We don't have a sewer line ADAP around the area there that they could...
There's two sewer lines that are kind of close by, if you can call it close, along the northern side of the subdivision. The extension would be about 1.8 miles. And along 3-Mile Line, the extension would be 2.95 miles, almost 3 miles. So because of the great distance that's from the nearest sewer line, they're proposing to use septic tanks for the subdivision.
This is on the... The recommendation is for us to go ahead and approve the preliminary plat, right?
Correct.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the preliminary plat? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 4.2.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.2 is also a preliminary plat approval for Rancho El Potrero subdivision, a 50-acre tract of land being all of Lot 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 of Block 1, Texas Garden subdivision. This is also in our rural ETJ, and the developers, Peña Chapa Development LLC, the engineer is South Texas Infrastructure Group. This plat is located on Western Road and 3-Mile Road. The applicant is proposing 74 single-family residential lots, all half an acre or larger. Septic tanks will be used due to the lots being at least half an acre. City staff has reviewed and approved the water, sewer, streets, and drainage being proposed for this single-family residential subdivision. Item 4.2 is now before you.
The recommendation is to...
It's for approval.
For approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the preliminary plat approval? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.3.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.3 is authorization to purchase via state-approved contract two vehicles for the planning department. We will be purchasing two Ford F-150 vehicles via buyboard contract 521-16. The cost for both vehicles will be $38,709.50. If approved, you will see a budget amendment for this purchase later in the meeting. Item 4.3 is now before you.
The recommendation is to go ahead and approve the purchase of $38,709.50. Do you need a motion?
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the purchase? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.4. Mr. Arrevalo.
Mayor and Council, we're here to seek authorization to solicit for bids for the Boys and Girls Club, the athletic uniforms. And pretty much, we cover all the sports, from football, soccer, basketball, volleyball, baseball, softball, and it's all for one year with two one-year options.
Do you need a motion to go ahead and authorize?
So move, Mayor. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you very much. 4.5. Mr. Zapata.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.5 is an interlocal agreement between the City of Mission and the City of Walton regarding the use of the animal control facility. City of Walton, Texas, will be making a one-time payment fee of $3,000 to the City of Mission to expand its facility. $70 will be assessed to the City of Walton per animal that is brought over to our facility, and the $200 will be assessed for any animal needing to be quarantined. Mayor and Council, this agreement is for one year.
The recommendation from our staff is to go ahead and approve this contract with Walton.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the interlocal agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
4.6.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.6 is to reclassify the account from the fourth quarter of 2015, October through December 2015, on the amount of $19,533.
So, in the amount of $19,533?
Yes, sir.
We do need a motion to go ahead and reclassify?
So move, Mayor. Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
4.7.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.7 is the authorization to solicit bids for stop-loss insurance. This item is to authorize our agent, GF Financial Group, to solicit bids on our behalf for stop-loss insurance. And this insurance covers any claims exceeding our deductible of $100,000. So anything we spend on medical and prescription will get paid back to us, anything over $100,000.
So you're asking us to go ahead and approve the stop-loss insurance?
Yes, sir. To authorize GF Financial Group to solicit bids on our behalf for stop-loss insurance.
We did a motion for that?
I'm going to approve, Mayor. Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Nohosa. 4.8.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. SAP is coming to seek authorization to solicit bids for pest control services. The pest control services will be for all city buildings. Item is now before you.
We do need a motion to go ahead and authorize to solicit for bids?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to solicit for bids for pest control services for all the city buildings? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nohosa. 4.9.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. 4.9 is authorization to purchase via buyboard from Barnes &amp; Noble Booksellers for library material. We're requesting permission to purchase books and media for the library. We're wishing to purchase from Barnes &amp; Noble, and they are a buyboard contract, and the cost is $10,000.
So the request is to approve the cost of $10,000?
Yes.
We do need a motion for...
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize the purchase of $10,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Dominguez.
Mayor and City Council, item 410 is authorization to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Mission, City of McAllen, City of Baumhurst, City of Walton, Hidal County, Texas concerning implementation of the Mission Police Department First Offender Program. Mayor and City Council, this program, we've actually got a grant from the governor's office to implement this grant. One of the things we're trying to do is be able to help as many children as possible. I've personally gotten with every chief from these communities, and they're willing to participate in the program, to include our district attorney, Mr. Ricardo Rodriguez. Obviously, this is to be able to get as many people involved in the First Offender Program.
I'm going for approval.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize to enter into interlocal cooperation agreement with the City of Mission, McAllen, Baumhurst, City of Walton?
Hidal County.
Hidal County. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 411.
Item 411, Mayor and City Council, is authorization to grant right-of-way entry permit to the federal government to place radio equipment on water towers belonging to the City of Mission. We've done this in the past, Mayor and City Council, where we allow U.S. Border Patrol and the Department of Defense to put up radio equipment on two water towers, the one in Madero and the one on Benson Palm Drive. The period of the contract is June 1, 2017 through June 1 of 2019.
Okay, so we need a motion to go ahead and authorize the right-of-way for federal government to go ahead and place their antennas on our towers.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to approve? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you. 412.
On the item 412, Mayor, approval of a resolution authorizing Mission Police Department to submit an agreement for the temporary closure of a state right-of-way to the Texas Department of Transportation for the first annual FCA 5K run event. We're coordinating with Gold's Gym, Mayor and City Council, for this run, which will happen on Taylor Road off of there by Gold's Gym, onto Colorado, and then South Sherry Road. We will be responsible for coordinating the event as far as traffic control. We're asking authorization to be able to send this permit to the Texas Department of Transportation and FAR.
I'm going for approval. That's resolution number 1508.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve Resolution 1508? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 413.
Item 413, Mayor and City Council's approval to rescind the authorized purchase of police body cameras via buyboard contract 52417 and authorize the purchase under buyboard contract 500-15. When we first got the quote on this particular item, the vendor put the wrong contract number. So we had to basically go back now and put the right contract number before purchase. So we're just requesting to put the new contract number of 500-15.
And the dollar amount is for $193,430, correct?
It's the same. It hasn't changed.
It has not changed. No, Mayor.
Okay, we do need a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
The resent and also to approve the amount.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation for the resent and then to authorize the cameras for the police department? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 422, award bid for the replacement of at City Hall.
414, Mayor.
414.
414, Mayor and City Council's approval to rescind the authorized purchases of security system computer equipment from a source vendor and authorize the purchase under buyboard contract 493-15. This vendor also, Mayor and City Council, we use them a lot for our security system, both our main police station and our south station. In this case, they've now gotten a buyboard contract number, and in order to take advantage of the 30% rebate on the products, we wish to purchase under buyboard contract 493-15.
We need a motion to go ahead and approve the cost of...
So move, Mayor.
$13,020.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Carillo. Resolution number?
Yes, Mayor, this would be Resolution Number 1509. And this is approval of the resolution declaring the adoption of the Municipio de Miguel Aleman Tamaulipas as their sister city. Mayor, we received a letter from the Mayor of Tamaulipas, Rosa Acosta, regarding becoming a sister city with the City of Mission. This item is now before you.
We need to approve Resolution 1509. We need a motion to do that.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1509 declaring the adoption of the Municipio de Miguel Aleman Tamaulipas as a sister city? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 416.
Yes, Mayor. Item 416 is approval to rescind authorization to auction vehicles via GovDeals Online and authorize the conveyance of surplus equipment vehicles to the Municipio de Miguel Aleman Tamaulipas. Mayor and Council, at the last council meeting, Public Works Department surplus vehicles that were going to be auctioned via GovDeals Online, we received a letter from the Mayor of Tamaulipas asking us to convey some of this equipment to her. So what we have before you is to convey one Vector truck and five vehicles to our sister city of Miguel Aleman.
Do we do need a motion for that?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the vehicles that... The vacuum truck?
One is the Vector truck and five vehicles, five trucks.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Avila.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.17 is the authorization to solicit proposals for fleet maintenance and preventative services. Our current contract right now, Mayor, is going to expire October 31 with first vehicle services. This is for our city vehicles for basic repairs and preventative maintenance. This contract's for three years with two one-year renewal options.
A three-year contract with...
With two one-year renewals, sir.
Who provides the services?
Right now, it's first vehicle services.
We do need a motion to approve.
I move, Mayor.
Second.
Authorization to solicit proposals for fleet maintenance. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Do you have item 4.18?
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is the authorization to solicit bids for fleet repairs. The same first vehicle services has this current contract, which expires October 31, 2017, and this contract is for major repairs on heavy equipment and specialized equipment. This contract's also for three-year contract with two one-year renewals. We decided to go ahead and separate it this year, sir, for pricing, get better pricing, and speed up the process of getting our vehicles out.
We do need a motion to authorize to solicit bids for fleet repairs.
I move.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
4.19. Mr. Benson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.19 is for authorization to solicit bids for palm tree trimming in city parks, city buildings, and on rights of ways. Our services are to include disposal of leaves and debris. The estimated cost of this bid is for $12,000.
We do need a motion to go ahead and authorize to solicit bids for palm tree trimming.
I want to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item 4.20.
Is for approval of resolution number 1510 of the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas, authorizing the submission of a grant application to Pet Safe of Knoxville, Tennessee. This grant will allow for the creation and development of a dog park in the city, either at Bangworth Park or Benson Palm Park.
We do need a motion to approve Resolution 1510.
I want to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 4.21.
Authorization to engage Georgia Montoya for grant writing pro bono services for Mission Dog Park. Georgia Montoya is a grant writer and has offered her services to write and file this grant on behalf of the City of Mission at no charge to the city.
We do need a motion to go ahead and authorize to engage...
Move for approval, Mayor.
...Gregoria Montoya for grant writing pro bono service for Mission Dog Park. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 4.22.
Awarded bid for removal and replacement of tile at City Hall. We received five bids. One was from Floor Covering Specialist, and bid was considered non-responsive because no bid bod was enclosed. Second-low bid was ELV Ventures, also considered non-responsive because there's a change of scope of services. The award bid to Centerstone Services, the next lowest responsible bidder, at a cost of $18,480.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve the award bid for the replacement at City Hall by the cost of $18,480.
I want to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to approve the bid? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
The owner of Centerstone Services, Felix Tirado, he was going to try to make it here. I don't know if he's here today. Nope. Okay. You want to ask him questions? Thank you.
4.23. Ms. Bella.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.23 is for the approval of the attached budget amendments from the general fund. There are two requests. The first is for reclassification of $40,000 in the planning department to reallocate funds to Capital Outlay for the purchase of two vehicles, as mentioned in a previous agenda item, and the second request is an amendment of $220,000 to allocate funds for the improvement and costs related to the opening of O'Blake Crossing, which will be done by Rio Valley Switching Company. This item is now before you.
I move for approval.
Second.
We do have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Bringing before you item 4.27, authorized staff to engage Chaney Engineering LLC for professional engineering services for the Spear Memorial Library Roof Project Design.
On this one, Mayor, I'm going to ask that we take no action. I believe there's some areas of the scope of service that we need to look at in the project design as well with Mr. Chaney. I would like to continue that conversation with the engineering group, so I'm going to recommend no action on this item.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have no unofficial business? You have any comments?
No, sir, no comments.
I have no comments either. We have deliberation regarding... We do have executive session.
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 551.001, Mayor.
We do have a motion.
Second.
A second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Mayor, I make a motion to reconvene. Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and reconvene? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. We have...
Yes, Mayor. Item 7.1A, this is the executive session item regarding deliberation regarding settlement of claim in reference to Catholic Cemetery Lot 141. If the council wishes to take action, we would need a motion to authorize a city manager or city attorney to negotiate and execute all documents necessary to settle the disputed claim and without waiving immunity in reference to Catholic Cemetery Lot 141, and that any payments made shall be made directly to the funeral home for services rendered within the parameters set in executive session.